Call the meeting to order, please. Right to Know Law Meeting Checklist is Chairman of the Select Board due to COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with the Governor Sununu's Executive Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, according to the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by videos or other electronic means. We are utilizing a Zoom platform for the electronic meeting. Members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform and the public has access contemporaneously, listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-558-8656 and entering meeting ID 84572207110, password 534667 by entering the same information through zoom.us. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notices to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee website at leeyouhampshire.org. And C, providing a mechanism for public to alert the public party during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. And D, adjourning the meeting. If the public is unable to access the meeting, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call votes. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Okay, Mr. Brown, are you there? Mr. Brown?
He should be there.
He was there. About Mr. Bugby? Spockby there?
He was.
Did we lose people? Is there anything on the chat?
I'm here, but you can't see me.
Oh, I can't see me. Okay. Is there anybody in the room with you, Mr. Bugby?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Brown, are you still there?
I don't know what happened to him.
Okay, we... We will proceed. Hopefully, we'll find out what happened to him. Maybe. Okay. First order, thank you. Tom Johnson, please chief.
Good evening. Thank you. We've become increasingly busy, busier at the police department, and we've been encountering an evidence storage problem. We're simply growing out of our current evidence room. The way the building is configured now, at the back of our Sally Port is where you walk into the back room. Half of it is an equipment room, the other half is secured evidence. What I'd like to do is build a room off of the Sally Port. This would enable us to have a 19-foot wide, 10-foot deep, 8-foot high room in which we put unsecured equipment into there, thus allowing us to double the size of our evidence room. We take the current equipment room and open it up into secured evidence. We got three quotes to have it done. As you can see, one was 16,500, one was almost 8, and then Mr. Morrow came in at 2,400. It's basically just a wall and a roof over it and a door. So it's fairly simple. We'll still be able to put two cruisers in our Sally Port during storms. So the quote he gave us was $2,400. But I was thinking this past week that if we could increase that to 2,900, that would give me $500 to buy the heavy-duty shelving we'd need to put in for ammo, firearms, and things like that.
It's a question from me. Why do you think one was $16,000 and this one's 2,400?
I don't know. I don't know where 16,500 came from. Like I said, it's an 8-foot-high, 19-foot-across wall. It's going to have a door on it, but the door for that is going to come from the existing evidence room now, and then it just needs a roof over it. It's pretty simple, you know, sheet rock on one side and unfinished on the inside. So I don't know why that one came in like that.
And when would this be done?
I'd like them to start as soon as possible. Like I said, we're running out of room.
Comments from the Board members?
My question is, does Mr. Morrow have insurance?
I believe he does. He's in business for himself. I will confirm that.
All right. And I also, I kind of have the same question as Mr. LaCourse. You know, I can see the 16,500, but the other quote you had is 77,320. Mr. Morrow, I love a cheap price, chief, but sometimes you have to ask yourself, what aren't you getting with the other two?
And I thought about that, but I knew all along that it shouldn't cost a lot of money. I actually was going to just build it myself.
Yeah.
It's wood. It's the cost of some 2x4s to stud a wall and some roof rafters on that with some plywood and sheet rock. It's, we're talking plumbing. You know, Bill Stevens is going to dispose of the old closet when we demolition that. So I really don't know why they were that high.
Yeah, the Pearson was, has electrical and lighting. The other two don't seem to have that. What?
Yeah, we don't, we won't need the lighting because there's already lighting in there. So again, I don't know why that one had it in there.
All right.
Mr. Brown come back yet, do you know?
No, I believe Karen went to see if she could assist him.
Okay. Any questions from anybody else at this point?
The only other thing is source of funds, John.
The Building Capital Reserve.
Yeah, it's possible that the trustees won't approve it because it's not $5,000 or more, so it's not a capital expense.
Gotcha.
So my suggestion would be to take it out of the building maintenance and repair if the trustees don't approve it.
We'll try the first one.
Okay.
So I guess I would ask if we can ask the town administrator to make an official request to the trustees of trust fund for this particular expense.
Yeah, I did send John Tappan an email the other day, so I don't, I just don't know when their next meeting is.
Okay, all right.
So therefore, I move to approve Scott Morrow's bid of $2,400 plus an extra $500 up to $2,900, which the monies is to come out of the town buildings' capital reserve fund. In the event it doesn't come out of the capital building reserve fund, I would come out of the building maintenance and repair.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, Mr. Bugby?
Yes, sir.
Mr. LaCourse? Yes. Mr. Brown? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Julie, is there anything else in the agenda you need me for?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Have a wonderful night, everybody.
Thank you.
You too.
Mr. Chief. Is Karen Rothie there?
Because she's gone to see if she can give Mr. Brown an assist, she'll, we'll push her to the end of the meeting.
Sounds good. Selectman Bugby, you have the floor.
In the agenda packet, there's the information that was shared with the members of the Finance Committee, and only reason I had Julie include this is just if you have any questions or if you have any direction in terms of anything you want me to say to them on Wednesday night. It is, it is an in-person meeting, so that should be interesting, but that was the only reason that it's there.
Well, I appreciate it. There's a lot of information. I haven't read it in totality, but I will. If I have anything, I'll get back to you at that point. Does anybody else have a question? Okay, you're off the hook. You're still on board, Scott?
Oh, yeah. This is really a Julie thing. She can update us. She's been in contact with our attorney and they're waiting for his attorney, I guess, to set up a meeting, but maybe Julie can fill us in.
Yeah, I spoke with our attorney last week, and I guess the two attorneys are just waiting to connect and see about setting up a time. We also did ask for something in writing from his attorney that would state what their current state of mind is on this.
Let's hope it doesn't drag too far.
Right.
But obviously, we have to be patient. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bugby?
No, no, I don't think so.
All right. We'll come back to you if there is. Town Administrator, please.
Before I get to the agenda items, I just want to quickly touch on where we are with tax revenue. We're still doing well.
Good.
For tax year 2020 P1, we're at 95.8% collected, which last year we weren't even there. So revenue still seems to be coming in. It looks to me that town clerk revenue is a little bit down, maybe about $10,000 in motor vehicle registrations, but we're not too far off the mark.
Julie, can I ask you a question? All those reimbursements that was in the manifest today for our overpaid taxes, that's not in those numbers, right?
That doesn't affect it at all.
Okay.
We got, we got paid twice through no fault of our own, so we're just issuing refunds for the double payments.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie.
Sure. So you may recall back in March when we met with the Select Board and the Board decided what we were going to close and what we were going to keep open, even though we kept Little River Park open to the general public, you did say to not allow use of the barbecues. So we've had a request, I think, from the VFW, so I'm just wondering if at that, this time, the Select Board is willing to let people use the barbecue grills.
I feel comfortable at this time that people are well aware of the needs of, you know, social distancing and so forth, and it's not a good idea to get outside, so this Select feels we should allow barbecuing again. Mr. Bugby?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay. Let's open it up. Thank you.
The next item for discussion is the memorandum of understanding. You may recall on June 8th, we discussed this, and at that time, the Select Board chose to execute an MOU with ORYA, but it expires August 1st. So we are fast approaching August 1st, and so I'm just asking what the Board might want to do.
And there'd be no changes from that initial approval?
None that I'm aware of, no.
Larry, are you there?
I'm here.
Do you have any opinion?
I have personal opinions, however, we have not had an opportunity for the Recreation Commission to meet due to various members not being available. We've only got four on our commission right now, and only two of us have been available. I'm going to try to schedule a meeting for the first Tuesday in August, see if we can get that done. But as far as looking through the MOUs, the two of them, first, I can only speak personally at this point, the ORYA MOU, I think that I had sent an email back in, on May 13th regarding Section 8. The annual payment to ORYA could be construed as a, let me pull that up, neither party shall receive any compensation from the other for services provided under the MOU. I think there's a conflict there. And I've always had the personal opinion that paying an organization to manage themselves and we foot the bill for it is kind of upside down. I did look at the Maximum Velocity MOU. Basically, it pretty much reads the same thing. The only question I would have, and I haven't had a chance to discuss this with Joff, has to do with Section 8A and the guarantee of $2,500 as the cost to, I would assume, to do the management part. But I can tell you that I spent a lot of time down at Park during the week, and I have observed Joff and how he runs things there and taking care of the facility. He's been very conscientious with regard to that, and as you may recall, I've had issues with ORYA in the past with that. So officially, I can't really give a recommission assessment on that. That's my own personal opinion.
Thank you, Larry.
The only other thing that I might add is, at this point in time, I believe the town is already authorized to pay ORYA their stipend for this fiscal year, so that, that's a consideration.
So I just want to clarify something. The money that we give ORYA every year is not to manage the fields. The money that the towns give to ORYA is to offset the costs to the families for the programs that they participate in.
Does that go directly to the families?
Well, I don't know if you want to say directly, but it, in a way, it does, because if the municipalities, if the three towns did not give money to ORYA, the cost to the families would be greater.
Well, we know that Durham is not giving them money next year, and they've greatly reduced their amount.
And my understanding is that the families in Durham will pay more money.
Yeah, the question is how much and what's the economic benefit of that. I think probably if Joff is on, maybe he can speak to that a little bit more as compared to Maximum Velocity.
Well, I think Matt Gloode wants to speak to that issue since it's an ORYA issue.
Okay. I didn't know he was here.
Can anybody hear me?
Go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, as part of our submission the last few years, and we're already preparing to be able to present for this year, we showcase how the funding from the communities is a direct subsidy to the individuals from that specific community to participate in local recreational programs. So when we present, we ask for, we've been asking recently for an amount that would bring the admin rate for a Lee participant down to zero, and that would cover the, you know, operating expenses for Lee-specific community members who participate in ORYA, much like it would be for, you know, tax funding, the full-time staff and operating for a fully-funded rec department. We base that on the amount of participants that we are expecting from that specific community in that upcoming year, and then base that against what we anticipate our operating would be, minus other, you know, our fundraising expectations and things like that. So that's where that money goes. This whole three-year, if you signed up for a recreational program, you would have seen a Dover rate, sorry, a Durham rate, a Lee rate, a Madbury rate, and an other rate. And that is related to the expected number of participants and expected number, expected amount of funding.
Has the dog barking? You can mute.
Not me this time.
Karen just left.
Okay.
So you're on. Mr. Brown, get back. Maybe?
Maybe he's putting the dogs in another room.
I had pizza show up, and that's why my dog went nuts.
Oh, well, you sound, we can hear you nicely now. What did you do?
The pizza was delivered, so he didn't...
Okay.
Or the pizza delivery man, I should say.
Mr. Gold, are you still speaking?
I wrapped up unless you've got any specific questions. Hopefully, that answers the issue.
Well, I have another question if I could.
Please.
You also, to Matt, you also service Barrington and other towns. How does their rate, since they don't contribute a stipend to ORYA, how does their rate per participant compare to what we pay in the Town of Lee? Take Barrington, for example.
Yeah, since they don't contribute anything, they have been at a higher rate than all communities, last year anyway, with the expectation, it's not finalized that Durham, you know, won't be offering any funding for ORYA this upcoming year. That was the plan, but it still has to be voted on. If that is the case, then Durham residents would be paying the same as a Barrington resident, as a Dover resident, as a Epping resident. I could get an example, if you'd like one, from our previous seasons, just to showcase a little difference. Might take me a minute, so feel free to ask any other questions.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear a direct comparison.
I believe that we received a spreadsheet at budget time that showed all of this. Mr. Bugby, do you remember that?
Yeah, but I don't have it in front of me, so I can't speak to it, but...
I don't have it either at this point.
All right, so I'm looking here at our spring lacrosse page on our website. I'm just looking at 10U youth lacrosse, the resident rates for this spring, which was, you know, the season that has since been canceled. A Durham participant would have paid $153, a Lee participant would have paid $153, a Madbury participant would have paid $135, and somebody from outside of those three communities would have paid $204.
Okay.
Anybody from Maximum Velocity here?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So Maximum Velocity, we ran a pilot program this winter for basketball, and we have expanded on field hockey, and whether you lived in Durham, Lee, or Madbury, the rate was exactly the same. So for basketball, it was 90 bucks, and I don't have the number in front of me for field hockey. It didn't make a difference whether you lived in Durham, Lee, or Madbury. The fee was exactly the same on those.
Do you offer lacrosse, Joff? I'm just wondering if, because that's the example Matt gave, if it's comparable.
Do I offer lacrosse?
Well, yeah, the example that he gave, the $153 for the Lee resident, I believe, was for a spring lacrosse.
So I offered, I offered, let's, why don't we do apples to apples instead of oranges?
Yep.
Let's do that. We were, we were $90 for basketball. I don't know what they were. We were, for lacrosse, excuse me, for field hockey, for our littles, we were $90. I think they were 100, and Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're 120. I don't, I don't know what they charge the other towns, because in all honesty, what we were interested in was providing a cost that was beneficial for the kids that was the same cost, and it was $90 for our, our little kids for, that, that's where we were at. So I, we can try and compare apples to apples if that's what you'd like to do. I'm not going to compare apples to oranges. I don't think that that's fair for, for anybody out there.
Well, that, again, that's what I was asking. He gave an example of lacrosse, and you gave an example of basketball. That's what I was trying to do.
What about, I mean, Joff, your biggest is soccer. You know, what, I've got our fall soccer rates for this upcoming fall. I can find those pretty quickly. You know what you have for each of the age groups?
For us? What are you, what are you, what are you looking for, Matt?
I'm trying to find my, it might be easier for me to get to my spring soccer for this year, just what, I mean, if they want a direct comparison, how we showcase a subsidy for the town funding, I'm just going to try to pull up our spring travel soccer for this year. See if I can find that.
That's not apples to apples, Matt. I mean, we play more tournaments. We play in a different league. We play totally, totally different, so you really can't compare those apples at all.
Yeah, I guess the only comparison is the fact that we have the, you know, reduced rates for the level of funding for the communities offer.
Yeah, basketball is apples to apples, and that's, that's probably the best.
Let's see if I can get basketball.
Mr. Brown, do you have an opinion on this?
Well, so it's hard, we're talking about, we're talking about ORYA and Maximum Velocity and pricing, right?
That's what we're talking about.
That's really, that's what we're talking about, and then we're trying to compare to what we have, or what they charge, what they charge the other towns. I don't know where we're going to go with this. I mean, we can, we can try to, what's our, what is it we're trying to do? We trying to say, well, they charge us too much, or they're not charging us enough, depending on what town you look at?
I think we got here...
We're very close, we're very close to price fixing here.
I think we got here by trying to address Larry Kinberg's comments about making a connection between the MOU and the, we'll call it a stipend that we give ORYA.
And Maximum Velocity takes no money from the Town of Durham, Lee, or Madbury, nor do we want any money from the towns of Durham, Lee, and Madbury. Period, end of discussion.
And does anybody know how the stipend came about?
It's fairly ancient history at this point. I mean, I, you know, I think it goes back to the 60s or 70s.
I don't know.
It's a, it's a subsidy for the organization, and Durham is in the process of beefing up their own recreation department. That's why they're kind of phasing out Oyster over youth, in my opinion.
Right.
Yeah, I think we need to get back to the MOU and not try to tie it to programs and stuff like that. And I have some questions. I don't know if it's my turn yet, Mr. John, but...
You have the floor.
I have a few questions for both of those particular individuals. One of them is a general one, and I'm not sure. I'm looking at, I think it's, this is Maximum Velocity's, but how did we get from July 1st, 2020 to June 3rd, 2021? What's so special about those particular dates? Is that just something that was picked? And the same question for, oh, just a minute, the same question for ORYA, you know, what is the, the term? We keep jumping around in terms of dates here. I'd rather get us back to a certain period of time that we rent, or not rent, but have this particular agreement with each of those organizations. So I don't care who goes first, but if you both could address that.
I can address that if you'd like me to go first.
Go ahead.
So when the MOU was originally put in, it was put in for May. It had been pushed out, and when I had put in for the 1st of July, I thought that that was sufficient time at that point in time when we had our original meeting for the Selectmen to sit down and have the discussion between the two MOUs, and that is the reason why I chose that date. And that is the reason why I chose that date. Uh, personally, I think that there should be a 7-1 calendar or 8-1 calendar when you start an MOU. Because sports generally run from fall to spring. And it's easier for organizations to go. I'll turn that over. I hope I answered that properly for you, Mr. Buggy.
Okay, thank you. If Matt can address the issue.
Please.
Yep, so I don't know why the original MOU dates were as they are. I am fine with anytime. Um, January 1 is fine with me. That way we know that it's coming and it's not something that can fall through the cracks. I'm fine with, with it running from into any timeframe.
So I, I think the reason we, we started this in March or April is when we, when we were first doing this, there started to be conversation about using the field for baseball in the spring. And so I think that's simply the explanation for the start date of this. At the time, it was to coordinate the baseball teams that wanted to use the field.
I see. All right. Uh, my other question is from Maximum Velocity. Um, in section, ooh, hold on. In section, trying to find the section. Um, it's about cancellations. Where is that?
Must be 3F.
3F?
Well, cancellation.
3F. Yes, 3F.
Yeah.
Cancellations are to be approved by Maximum Velocity. Application for reimbursement is made to the Rec Commission, Town Lee within 90 days. That's, that's kind of a little bit different than the one we have now. Joff, can you speak to why you need to be the one that approves these?
Absolutely be happy to answer that question for you. So you're asking us to maintain the MOU for you and the application for reimbursement. So you're asking for somebody to go through a season. Generally, a season's going to run middle of, I'll just pick fall for you guys. Middle of August to the 1st of November, generally. And people will come in and, and rent the facility. So for example, this year, in the springtime, Maximum Velocity's rented the fields. And of those three times, we have two times where it rained out and one time we didn't use the field because it was too hot out on that. And general verbiage is you want to be able to have that 90 days because you don't want it to extend past that timeframe. So you don't want anybody to come back and after 91 days and through the season after that and come back and say, well, hey, I did this and you never, you never gave me a refund. Well, you never asked for a refund or a quote from the town, so we moved on to the next season. So it's to, to protect that town a lot of ways from that perspective. And a lot of the other times you're asking for the cancellations are to be approved by MBFC. You're trying to take off a load from your recreation department. You're trying to take a load off from your highway department and you're trying to take a load off of the town administrator. Now, if that needs to be reworded, I'm perfectly fine with that. That's just some verbiage that I'd seen out there in the past that I made out as a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Um, and the last question I have, I think it's, it's really for the board and maybe the Oyster River Youth and Maximum Velocity can speak in. Things aren't going so well COVID-19 wise these days. Are you guys still going to have uh, classes and, you know, training sessions and games and stuff as well? And I think more to the question to the board is, is that something that we want to allow to happen in this particular environment with our facilities? So I think that's more of a general question. Board needs to have a conversation about.
Well, are you talking, Scott, about being in a closed classroom type environment?
No, I'm talking about out on the field with all those kids in proximity to each other. And I assume they're not going to be wearing masks. They're not going to have PPE on. So are we setting ourselves up for problems?
Well, I don't know. Have there been, have there been, I mean, they've, they've already started some activities. Have the parents had any issues with what's going on?
May I jump in on this question, please?
Sure.
Rock. The state has mandated different phases throughout the whole process. Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. Phase 1 was enacted in, don't hold me to the exact date, please, but it was about the 22nd of May where you could start practicing in pods of nine. Then around the 15th of June, it went to Phase 2. Maximum Velocity had rented the field from the town of Lee where we had everything going in with pods of nine out on our field where it was, when I say pods of nine, gentlemen, it is dedicated coach and nine players. So they would, they would actually go through a circuit training, so they would follow each other. We did one week of that, then the next week, the next mandate came out. That next mandate came out where you could practice in pools of 50. So four coaches, 46 players, whatever needed to be done. Then the next mandate came out on July 3rd. That enabled us to play games, hold friendlies and tournaments if we so chose. As of right now, we have had seven games where our coaches are all wearing their masks. We have socially distanced. We've had a COVID parent and/or coach onsite at all times.
Yeah.
So that we would monitor the kids. We've had no issues whatsoever. We've played teams from the state of New Hampshire only. And the state of New Hampshire allows us to play anybody from Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont. I believe that they just added Massachusetts on Friday, but I have not verified that, nor have I gone down that road as of right now.
Great, thank you.
So the safety protocols, we followed to the T that were mandated by the state, governor and his council. So moving forward into the fall, we are still at that phase. And we have our kids signed up. And we're ready to roll. And we will be happy to pay the fee that we suggested the minute this, the contract is signed. With any suggestions or differences that you guys might make.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who has not spoken yet would like to speak?
Um, I can just give a little feedback related to programming now and in the fall. Um, just as with MV, we're following the uh, New Hampshire youth, uh, sorry, amateur and youth sports guidelines. Uh, as they change, we will change. So um, New Hampshire has always communicated the ability of being flexible as um, the status of risk increases or decreases. Um, so as any new guidelines come out, change, increase, decrease, we do the same. Uh, and that is our plan moving into the fall season. So the only last thing, you know, I can advocate for between the two MOUs is that, you know, in, in our mission statement for ORYA, we specify, um, that we offer programming for Durham, Lee, and Madbury participants. Uh, if we get players from other communities, that's great. Um, but our, our focus is being the de facto recreational sports provider for Durham, Lee, and Madbury. Um, Joff's been around for a long time. MV's been very successful in soccer. Um, you know, and they welcome players from, from every place, but and, and that's fine. There's a place for that. I worked for Seacoast United for a long time. And they want to get the best players from any place they can. Um, and in, in some ways, MV is the same. Joff, obviously you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong at all. But there might not be many or any players from Lee on those MV teams. Um, playing on those fields as their home field. Now, it might not necessarily be a bad thing, but our goal is to provide the recreational programming for the kids of Durham, Lee, and Madbury. Um, if the MOU moves over to somebody else, um, a Lee participant in ORYA would end up paying for the fields again, um, through, you know, anything that might be dedicated towards it via taxes and then for the rental rate as outlined by the MOU. Just wanted to make sure that that was known and, and clear, um, for the residents.
All right. Thank you very much at this point.
John, one thing. Maximum Velocity has never turned away a child from Durham, Lee, or Madbury.
Thank you.
I hope, I hope I didn't make that sound like that, Joff. Um, I, I know that.
And, and that's fine, you know, so you know, you look at the basketball program, 100% within Durham, Lee, and Madbury. And we don't even use the, the Lee fields at all. We use the school. We do field hockey.
Okay, thank you very much. I've heard quite a lot at this point. I'm going to close that conversation. I'm going to try to get this off track at this point. I'm going to make a motion that we continue a memorandum of understanding with Oyster River Youth Association for the next coming year. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, at least it's on the floor at this point. But so now we have it on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
I personally would like to hear from the Rec Commission. I'm not sure when they can meet, but this is part of their charge in terms of assisting us with the rec facilities in the town of Lee. So I understand the reasons why they haven't met yet, but I would like them to meet and give us what their thoughts are on these two proposals. So that's, that's why I did not second. I, I'd like to see them have a discussion about it and then get back to us in terms of what they're recommending.
I would be happy to do that. We're, I will plan a meeting for the first Tuesday in August, which is our normal meeting time. I'm hoping we have a quorum. That's the only issue.
All right.
So.
That, that is on the agenda.
And you meet via like Zoom or something like that, like Larry, right?
Well, that's what we're trying to decide, whether Zoom or we're going to meet at the park at the pavilion.
I see.
We've got a lot, we've got a lot on the plate to to work out for the rest of the year, so.
All right. Well, that, that's my hesitation from supporting this. I'd rather have you guys give us whatever your recommendation is.
And, and I'd like, I'd like to explore a little bit more into this. Um, I'm still, I, I'm still very hesitant over the finances. Um, and the, uh, P and L statements and so on. It, it just, as a taxpayer, it just disturbs me looking at the numbers and wondering where the money goes.
Okay.
So Larry, would the same expectations um, that ORYA has had to provide 990s and audits, um, be required of anybody else overseeing the MOU?
Well, I think, I think it's important that the taxpayers know where the money is going and how it's being spent. And especially since the taxpayers are contributing money to this. Yeah, I don't know if I have a definitive answer for you on that.
So the practical application of that is the agreement that we have now expires August 1st. And people want to use the fields after August 1st. So what would the board like to do?
Right now, we have a continuation contract, right?
Yeah, can we continue it for a period of time?
We can.
Well, that's more of a question.
Yes, we, would the board can vote to continue it until date certain or date uncertain?
Can I just interject one thing here? And I brought it up before. Um, and it has to do with the fact that, uh, that the town has already budgeted money to ORYA for this fiscal year. And let's say, for example, the select board decides to go with another management company. What happens at that point with the money that's been invested from the town?
But the MOU is, it's separate from the money that the towns give ORYA for programming.
I, I understand.
They're not connected. There's no, I mean, there's not really a relation between the two.
No, I, I, I think there's more of a relation than, than might be anticipated.
Mr. Brown?
I don't know how, but okay.
Yes, John.
Do you want to pull your second at this point or you want to stay with it?
No, I'm going to pull it in.
You're going to pull it out?
I just pull it out, whatever, yeah. This, somehow or another, this, we just keep dragging this thing on. It shouldn't be this complicated, really.
No, it shouldn't. So at this point, you have a.
Two agreements, we've got two agreements out there. Uh, we've gone through the pricing. I don't know what we can do about the pricing anyway. Um, what, where, how does this thing end? I mean, how, how do we bring it to a, to a satisfactory conclusion where we get kids out on the field and everybody's happy? What is it we're looking for?
I, I'm, I'm looking for the Rec Commission to give their opinion on these two things. We tasked them with controlling or doing the recreational programming and things like that. So I, I would like to hear from them and I understand why they haven't been able to get a meeting, but I would like to extend this current agreement for another 30, 60 days. Until they can get back to us and give us their opinion.
How about giving us a date certain?
Okay, how about 30 days?
Would that be enough time, Larry?
We'll have to make it work.
All right.
So we're extending it to September 1st?
Thursday, September 1st. If Mr. Glow is amenable, I, I'm not sure if that works for him or not.
Um, it, it definitely causes some, some challenges with us being able to plan on fall sports, which would be starting almost at that time, if not a little bit before. Um, so, you know, as an example, if we plan on utilizing the main field for Monday through Thursday practices for football or soccer, um, and then the MOU switches hands and we no longer have access to the fields Monday through Thursday, those sports potentially have to be canceled if there's no other place for them to practice.
So why would?
I'd like to ask both, uh, Joff and, uh, gentlemen from ORYA, do, do you know what it is we're looking for to reply, to respond to Scott? You know?
Yes, it is 15 days, gentlemen.
I mean, Scott said you had, Scott, you said you had a list, right?
A, a list of what?
You said you had a list of things that you wanted them to respond to.
Oh, I asked my questions already, Carrie.
Okay, so they're verbal questions and all I'm trying to do is make sure they have, they know what they are.
Yeah, well, I've asked all my questions and I got satisfactory answers. And I think, can, and Matt, can you, maybe I'm misconstruing something, but if we have an MOU with you and let's say it extends until September 1st and you've scheduled whatever, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or whatever you said. And if we switch and go to Maximum Velocity, I would assume you still have those particular days. Why would those days go away?
Because. In a situation where the MV switches, where the MOU switches hands, but um, if it did, then the scheduling would be up to MV. So if they chose to reschedule facilities, um, I would assume that that is part of the MOU.
And in the MV MOU, um, the ORYA isn't given any preferential treatment. So they don't get first or second dibs at the field and if I'm reading it correctly, they have to pay for the use of the fields.
Okay. I must have missed that.
A suggestion, please.
Where are we?
Mr. Buggy, ma'am, or Mr. Of course, may I make a suggestion, please, sir?
Go ahead.
So they're looking to meet the first week, uh, the, the Lee Rec Commission is looking to meet the first week of August. So that would be the 6th or 7th, if I look at my calendar properly. That's a Monday and a Tuesday. I think they should be able to get back the information that you need so that you guys can make. so that you guys can make a educated decision for the citizens of Lee on your next meeting, which I'm assuming is the 13th of August.
Does that work, Julie?
The next meeting is not the 13th of August. The next select board meeting?
Yes, yes, Julie.
It's either the 3rd or the 10th, depending on what I get from our attorney relative to the lease of the Daly Building. But the next regularly scheduled meeting would be two weeks from tonight, which is the 10th.
I'm sorry, I was looking at July. Sorry, Julie. So the 3rd, 4th, so the 10th, yes. So that, that's, I would go as far as the 14th as a suggestion for, for the selectmen, but I'm sorry, I was looking at July. Larry would meet on the 3rd, 4th or the 5th, and then your next meeting would be the 10th. So that would be my suggestion to the-
We can do it on the 10th, date certain. Okay. So we're gonna get to the contract?
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Are we changing the extension date from September 1st to something else?
No.
Okay.
September 1st is the extension on the MOU we have with Oyster River Youth.
Okay.
Larry and company will meet on that first week, and then we'll meet the Monday after that and hear what they have to say.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Brown?
Yes, it is now.
Okay, let's move forward.
All right, thank you. So speaking of the proposed lease for the Daly Building, I received today a lease from Mr. Daly that I believe his attorney put together. You may recall that the lease that our attorney put together was four pages long. The lease from Mr. Daly was 17 pages long. I went through it and marked it up considerably and then sent it to our attorney. Unfortunately for us, not for her, she's on vacation this week. So I'm not sure when I will see her comments back on that. It certainly won't be before the middle of next week.
I'm sorry, Julie, how many pages was his?
17.
17 pages compared to our four?
Yep.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Enough said. What else you got?
Um, you know, we're still working with DOT. You know, Karen can certainly speak to this. She has reached out to Stratford Regional Planning to see if they can give some assistance with the traffic information that DOT is looking for. So, you know, we're still moving forward. It's obviously a lot slower than I would like it to be, but we are still moving forward.
If it all comes together, is September 1st realistic?
No.
It's more realistic.
I'm thinking it'd be, we'd be lucky to hit October 1st. So.
Do we have somebody lined up to do the internal reconfiguration? Is that something Mr. Daly's doing?
Uh, no, we're doing that, but we're using his contractor, someone who's familiar with the building.
Okay, great.
So, some good news, though. We got a third proposal for the security and fire alarm system, and it's $10,000 less than the previous number we had.
Oh, that's good.
So that's good news.
Some good news.
Some good news, right, some good news.
Now tell them the bad news.
About the New Hampshire retirement system?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was not good news. The retirement system issued a frequently asked questions that suggested, well, more than suggested, really, that based on the latest analysis that they did, employer retirement rates are gonna go quite, quite a bit higher than what they are now. As a matter of fact, they're estimating that for group one, I think is what they were talking about, it could be an increase of almost 26%. And firefighters will be an increase of almost 10%. So that, that's not good.
Well, something you gotta plan for, I guess.
Right, yep.
Anything else from the town of Missouri?
Uh, no, that's what I have.
And the consent agenda, is there anything that you want to pull, select people?
I'm good.
Mr. Brown?
What's the question?
Did you want to pull anything out of the consent agenda, or are you fine with leaving everything in?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay, therefore I move to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorche, yes, motion carries. Next thing, I move to enter into a non-public session. New Hampshire RSA. I'm gonna smudge you. 91-8,32A and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I roll call vote, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lacorche, yes, motion carries.
I don't know what happened to my agenda. It disappeared.
We're back in public?
We are.
Okay, do I see people there? Go ahead.
I moved to seal the minutes from our non-public session.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorche, yes, motion carries. Miscellaneous, unfinished business from anybody?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Brown?
No.
This town administrator?
Nope.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.